It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order Monday, June 7th. We will be stepping into closed session in accordance with Section 551-071, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issues Regarding Annexation of Castle Hills and the TERS Reimbursement Agreement between the city, TERS III, and Bright Realty LLC, for Section 551-072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and for Section 551-087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now move into closed session. All right, it is 6:47, and I'm going to reconvene the meeting into regular session, consider any action on items discussed in closed session. No actions to be taken. We will go ahead and move into the workshop. Discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda. Public Hearing Number One, Item E. Public Hearing Number Two. Consent Agenda. Anything on the consent agenda? Or we'll move ahead to the regular hearing. Item 12. Item 13. Item 14. Item 15.
We will request this be continued to the June 21st council meeting, along with the first public hearing also.
Okay. Item 16. Everybody have a chance to look at those dates? Item 17. Item 18. That one has a very specific language.
That is correct. The recommendation, it needs to be read just as it's stated on your agendas.
All right. Item 19. I worked with the city secretary to put these together. As far as the teams and the boards, of course, you all are welcome to give input on any of the other boards, but we've got a lot to chew through. So we're going to kind of share the wealth, if you will. But if you have other comments or info to give, we will be able to circle back on that at the next council meeting. Item 20.
We continue as long as the governor continues.
Yeah, and the governor just continued it again this morning. So that's where we are on that one. So, all right, if there are no further comments, we will go ahead and move into the DCTA presentation regarding proposed GoZone service changes.
Governor and Council, we have Nicole Recker with DCTA. She's the Vice President of Mobility Services and Administration, and she's here tonight to share this information with you.
Okay. This is Nicole Recker, and she's going to start. Let me make sure it's at the beginning of her. There we go. And he'll just go down. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My name is Nicole Recker. I'm the VP of Mobility Services and Administration at DCTA. I also have Raymond Suarez, our CEO, is with us today. And the purpose of today's presentation is to provide a briefing to the council about our proposed GoZone service. So we are currently in the FTA required public involvement process, and our staff has been out in the public and speaking with stakeholders to talk about, thank you, to talk about this proposed service that will really replace the majority of our fixed route service. For just some background and some history, I just wanted to let the council know that this GoZone service is really kind of an answer to a ridership decline that not only DCTA saw, but also transit agencies across the country as a result of COVID. And so our board and our staff really thought, let's use this opportunity to our advantage to look at ways to provide service that's a better experience for the passenger, but also more effective and efficient. And so we've been using this opportunity where ridership is low to look at various ways to provide better service to the communities that we serve. So last fall, DCTA opened an RFP process with our existing pre-qualified mobility-as-a-service vendors to see who would like to propose on providing on-demand service to our member cities. And our board authorized River North Transit, or VIA, to be our provider. And at that point in time, staff and our board worked closely with VIA to develop a proposed service plan that then we brought out to the public. And so we've been out in the public since April 19th, talking about this proposed GoZone service and collecting feedback. So I want to just talk a little bit about the GoZone service. It is a zone-based rideshare service that is primarily app-based booking. And as I mentioned before, it is operated by VIA. This, again, is really a response to significant change in travel patterns. Like I said, not just DCTA is seeing, but also nationwide. And really, that app-based booking, it really provides a more accessible and connected service than what we currently provide today. As I mentioned, the service replaces the majority of connect fixed route service, but it actually expands beyond the existing service area that we provide today and also provides extended hours of service. There are a lot of benefits to moving to an on-demand service model, but really, the focus is enhancing that passenger experience. And by enhancing that passenger experience, we're able to enhance the overall service delivery, which in turn builds DCTA's efficiency. From a passenger's perspective, there are a lot of really great benefits to this service. So shorter wait times than we currently have today, service 365 days a year, an extended service hour, easy booking, and the ability to actually pre-book trips. So as I mentioned, our partner is River North. They are a visionary market leader, and they have over 200 programs across six different continents. And we've actually got two of those programs in our backyard. So the city of Arlington replaced their existing fixed route service with the VIA service model. And then Trinity Metro, or the Fort Worth Transportation Authority, they actually have this service as well. The biggest changes that a passenger will see from a physical standpoint is going to be the change in vehicles. So currently, we operate either a large vehicle or a small cutaway. So you either see like a large green bus on the road, or you see a smaller white bus. We would be moving away from those buses and using a branded Chrysler Pacifica. So the vehicle would be dedicated to DCTA. It would be branded as DCTA. It would be very clear to see as it's arriving. And the flexibility that comes with using these types of vehicles is getting into tighter areas, being able to move around town a little bit more efficiently, and being able to have more vehicles on the road than what we currently have today. We're also able to scale the number of vehicles that we're using up and down as ridership, the need for ridership goes up or down. So if it's a really slow period of time, we're able to pull some of those vehicles off of the road using VIA's technology to actually lower our price, our cost of service. The other change is with stops. So currently, we have our fixed bus stops that you'll see throughout the community. Those would go away and actually be replaced with what we call virtual stops that would be at almost every single street corner. So it would provide the user a lot of flexibility. I like to use the example of going to Walgreens, and it's a rainy day. You go into Walgreens, you can stand inside Walgreens away from the elements. You can book your trip. You can track your driver all the way almost to the front of Walgreens, and then you only have to step out into the elements about 60 seconds before your trip picks up. So the way that our fare structure would work is that the FTA allows transit agencies to have a six-month, what they call fare promotion. And the purpose of this is to have kind of a promotional fare that is offered so that we can collect real data to determine what the final fare structure should be. So because we knew that this was a significant change to passengers, we wanted to make sure that we weren't changing too many things at once. And so for the first six months of service, we'll actually use our existing fare structure, but we're just trading out access to services. So rather than purchasing an AM/PM pass or a day pass and having access to all of our services, including connect service, you would still be able to purchase those passes. And instead of having the access to connect, you would have access to use the GoZone service. So this will work as people purchase, like I said, our existing fare types. In addition, we would offer a one-ride credit for 75 cents. So maybe somebody doesn't want to purchase a day-long pass. They just want to try the service out or use it to get to the grocery store and back. And so we'll provide them with the opportunity to just purchase on GoZone as well. The booking process looks very similar to something that you would see for Uber or Lyft, which is great for the adoption process. Customers will have an ease of adaptability when it comes to using the system because they've used it before. So you'll see here, you're able to actually book your trip from wherever you are. You'll be able to see the closest pickup location. You can track your driver to the location that you're out, meaning that you only have to meet the driver about 60 seconds before they get there. You can track your entire journey to your destination. And then at the end of the trip, you have the opportunity to rate your driver. And so that information goes to VIA, and VIA shares that information with DCTA so that we can ensure that the driver experience is a positive one. The way that we're looking at the service is a phased approach. There are three phases, the first being the lion's share of the service. And that Phase 1, which is slated for September 7th of this year, is primarily focused on two core sets of service. So one is going to be our base service, which really is truly what replaces the connect bus service today. And then the second are going to be the Phase 1 add-ons. And then we're looking at two additional phases in 2022. The Phase 2A would be Castle Hills Zone Expansion and then Access Service. And we're looking at an early 2022 launch. And then we're also looking at extending weekday hours as a Phase 2B, which would happen in summer of 2022 based on ridership. So when VIA first proposed the base service, which I'll show you in a second, that base service was really meant to replace fixed route. And our board said, what can we do to go above and beyond what we're currently providing today in order to truly enhance that service delivery? And so VIA came back with some what they call Phase 1 add-ons. And so we're going to go through those in detail, but those will really showcase how this service goes above and beyond and expands as compared to today. So Phase 1, as I said, these are two zones. There's a Denton Zone and then a Lewis-Hayland Village Zone. The service hours and the days of operation are very similar to what we have today. The way that this is structured is that service would either take place in the Denton Zone or it would take place in the Lewisville-Hayland Village Zone, and users would connect to the two zones using the A-Train. But as I mentioned, our board said, how can we make this better? And they came up with VIA, they came up with these add-ons to Phase 1 that are slated to launch on September 7th pending board approval. So I'm going to go through these various components because there are many add-ons. But again, these add-ons would be slated pending board approval to launch on September 7th. So the first is a Saturday hours extension. We have heard a lot of feedback about folks who maybe use the dark green line to go to a Mavericks game and need to come back and connect back to the A-Train. And so we are looking at a zone enhancement to increase the hours of service on Saturday. So instead of service ending at 8, it would end at 11. The second thing that we're doing, which really, I think, is one of the most exciting things, is looking at a Sunday service. And so this is the first time that you would see intra-zone connectivity. So as you know, our A-Train does not operate on Sundays. So instead, we would provide GoZone service from the Trinity Mill Station to any of the GoZones and back. So if someone in Denton wanted to go to the Trinity Mill Station to go explore Dallas on a Sunday, or vice versa, they could use the GoZone as a one-seat ride to the Trinity Mill Station from the Denton Zone. Conversely, somebody could go from the Lewisville-Hayland Village Zone to the Denton Zone as a one-ride seat as well. So it provides that connectivity along the A-Train corridor that doesn't currently exist on Sundays. The next expansion is the DeNia Neighborhood Expansion, which is that yellow box to the bottom of the Denton GoZone. And this service would, the service in this area would basically just expand the Denton Zone itself. That's currently an area where we do not provide service today. The Dart-Frankfurt Station to Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone is a commuter-based add-on. And so basically, what it would do is it would provide connectivity from the Frankfurt Station to anywhere within the Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone and back, Monday through Friday during commuter hours. So we have heard a lot about the city of Lewisville and the city of Hayland Village needing to attract a workforce into their cities. And so this would provide that connectivity for people that are using the dark green line and need to maybe access shift service early in the morning, or maybe their schedule doesn't align with the A-Train itself. And so this would enable them to take the dark green line into the Frankfurt Station and then connect to any location within the Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone. They would then be able to return their trip home. We're also proposing the Business 121 North Zone Expansion, which you can see in the yellow boxes to the right of the Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone. These are areas that are highly dense with some shopping centers and apartment complexes. These would work as what we call an island service to the Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone. So you could travel anywhere between the Lewisville-Hayland Village GoZone and the Business 121 GoZone as a one-seat ride and for that singular fare. And then the last add-on that we're looking at is what we call the Guaranteed Ride Home Expansion. And so this would be provided Monday through Saturday for three additional hours after service ends. I like to use the example of, I went to a Mavericks game. You know, I parked at the Old Town Station. I took the A-Train to the Green Line. I went to a Mavericks game. Mavericks game went into overtime. And although I can catch the Green Line back, the A-Train is no longer providing me connectivity back to the Old Town Station. So I can get to the Trinity Mill Station, and then I can use GoZone in those three additional hours to book a trip back to the Old Town Station to get to my car. It also works for you to take it actually back to your home, if you so choose. If you took GoZone from the closest intersection from your home to the train station and back, you could actually get that trip directly back home. So it provides a lot of that late-night connectivity that we don't currently have today. Phase 2, as I mentioned, has two components. The first of that is being access service. So we currently provide paratransit service with our own vehicles and our own operators today. We are in the process of coordinating with VIA to see what that program would look like by utilizing their drivers and their vehicles. And there are a lot of benefits to that, including real-time booking, where currently, passengers have to book ahead of time in order to utilize access service. But via GoZone, they would be able to book kind of in real time. And then the second component of that is the Castle Hills GoZone. I normally point out where that Castle Hills GoZone is located, but you can see it nestled right there under Business 121 Zone. And that would obviously be dependent on the annexation of Castle Hills. And then Phase 2B would be a weekday late-night service hour extension, and that truly is just based on ridership. So if we see a huge increase in ridership over time that would lend itself to exploring extended hours during those weekdays, then we would look at that, bring that back to our board for discussion and consideration. This is a service hour comparison. A lot of passengers like to see this image. The image on the left shows our current hours of operation. The image in the middle shows just the base service. But the one on the right that's highlighted in yellow shows the hour comparison and days of operation comparison to what we currently provide today if we were to launch base service plus Phase 1 add-ons. And so as you can see, this would be the first time where service would be provided on Sundays as well as providing service 365 days a year. As we look at how it compares to service itself, for the A-Train, the A-Train service would remain the same, even though we are looking at some increased frequencies for the fall. But there are a lot of those Phase 1 add-ons that truly enhance the A-Train service delivery. As we look at Denton, we would be replacing all of the existing fixed routes except for Routes 3 and 7. Those two routes would operate for six months concurrent to GoZone. And then our board would make a determination if Routes 3 and 7 need to remain in place or if they should be removed and fully replaced with GoZone. For Lewisville, the GoZone would replace Routes 21 and 22. And then we would also remove the Lewisville-to-Flowermount Lift Program. Our on-demand zones, which would be the Lewisville-Lakeway Zone, the Hayland Village Lift Zone, and the Denton Evening On-Demand Zone would all be replaced with GoZone. And as I mentioned, that Lewisville-to-Flowermount Lift Zone would actually be removed due to low ridership. For our support services, North Texas Express operates from Denton to the Alliance area and connects with Fort Worth, where it takes you from Alliance to Fort Worth. That would be removed and not replaced. MK101 is our service that operates between Monsignor King Outreach Center and our daily bread in Denton. That would remain in place. Access service would be considered for Phase 2A, and our van pool program would stay the same. All of our contract services, where our contractors provide 100% of the funding for services, those would remain the same. Our UNT Shuttle Service would remain the same, and their late-night lift program would remain the same. The only difference is that they currently pay a connect access fee, which provides them with unlimited access to our connect bus services. And because we would be reducing connect bus services, we're currently working with UNT Transportation to determine how to modify that fee to provide them with more access to GoZone. And then the new areas of coverage that I mentioned. So extended hours on Saturday and the addition of Sunday service, the DeNia Neighborhood, Business 121, and Castle Hills. The important part today is that we're in our open public involvement process. We have been collecting a lot of feedback since the start on April 19th, and we're collecting that feedback through June 25th. And we're certainly open to any feedback that the council will have. We have created a microsite that's dedicated to the service, all about the service, collecting feedback on the service, and that can be found at dctafeedback.net. But we're also open to giving presentations to groups or even one-on-one councils should anybody need help in understanding how this proposed change might impact their daily commute. And so we're looking for feedback about all types. We're looking for feedback on the zones themselves, on the fare structure, on how this impacts you. We've really been getting a lot of great feedback thus far. I would like to give a huge thank you to the city of Lewisville. They've been an excellent partner in helping us amplify this message that has really helped in getting a lot of really great feedback thus far. And I know that I went through this very quickly, but I am certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have. And Raymond is here as well, and he can help to answer, too.
One, a couple of quick questions. One, there will be service available for those who are in wheelchairs. You said you had paratransit service.
Correct. So we will have dedicated access service, which is for those who are ADA-qualified. But a portion of the dedicated fleet of vans will also be wheelchair accessible.
And the second question was for our people who may be a little bit technologically behind. Would they be able to phone in there? Because you said they could pre-call, so.
Yes, absolutely. So you can use the mobile app. You can purchase a ticket. You can purchase and do your booking over the phone with our customer service department. You can also do it in person. And then the mobile app actually has a desktop application. Additionally, we've been working with our social service agencies who are interested in purchasing kind of an upfront number of passes for their clients to actually set up what's called a client portal for them on the backend, that they would be able to book trips on behalf of their clients to assign those credits appropriately.
I've got a question. What about some of the senior places like Evergreen? Is there any outreach to them?
Yes. So the senior, all of the senior facilities, we focus on like a three-week portion of our outreach directly to senior facilities. And we've received a lot of really positive feedback from senior communities. And then we have also had two pop-up activations at libraries when they had senior activities occurring at the libraries.
Any other questions? Mr. Recker, thank you so much. It was a great summary.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C, Citizen Engagement ZenCity Survey Possibilities. And we have Director of Strategic Services Gina McGrath and her personal IT Services Liaison.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to talk with you a little bit tonight about ZenCity. And I think we're mostly familiar with that software. We currently utilize that citywide to gauge a little bit more resident community kind of needs and responses and priorities of the community. So we track this every day. We look at our social media. They do a compilation of all of the buzzwords that they're seeing around the city so that we can better respond to some of those things. And so we utilize that data to make better decisions about how we respond in crisis events or things that we know if they're not getting the information from the right sources, that maybe they're getting more unofficial, and we need to step in and give them some more data. And so we use it in a variety of ways right now. But mainly, we use it to try and get a hold of the responses from the community that we don't always get. We get a certain number of limited people that are vocal and want to share their opinions with the city. But this is a way to kind of go out and get those that aren't quite as vocal. So we use it quite often throughout the city. One of the examples of the information the city receives are insights. And what ZenCity does is when they see a topic out there or when we alert them to a topic that we want to be able to track information on, such as the Water Tower was a great example. They gave us an insight on that one after we had reached the compromise of utilizing I-35 and the murals on the side of I-35. And it tracked kind of that sentiment back from when we were first starting to talk about the Water Tower all the way through to that compromise. And it gives us a good kind of insight on what the residents were thinking. Another example that we had is Colorpalooza. This one, we were interested in tracking. This was one of the first events we held after the pandemic, and it was great to see that people were excited about it. They were talking about it. It was mostly positive. But what surprised us the most was after it was over, that positivity grew three times higher. And so once we'd held that event, they were so appreciative of having the event and the way the city staff pulled that off, that it was very positive. And so that was a great feedback for our community relations staff and everybody who worked on that event. But how does this integrate with the city's strategic plans? So we know that we've adopted three strategic moves in this past year, that being values-driven, connected city, and data-driven. And those are all encompassed in our ZenCity in that we try to get our most information for data decisions. We try and be connected so that we're understanding what's important to our residents, and we're utilizing that information. As we all know, knowledge is power. So the more knowledge that we have, the more that we can actually respond to our community. One of the new things, though, that ZenCity has that we haven't taken advantage of is the ability to create surveys and to actually send those out to our residents or whomever. We can post the link to the survey anywhere we want to. And they will actually analyze the data once the survey results are in and provide us an insight, similar to the ones we just saw with Colorpalooza and Water Tower. So we can do this free of charge with ZenCity. We already pay for it, so we might as well take advantage of it. We can do it every two months, quarterly, or even on an as-needed basis. So if at the end of the council meeting today, y'all were like, I don't know, we should get some input, we could send something out and get input on it. But what we would like to do is kind of try to plan this. So every couple of months or every quarterly. We don't want to do it more often than that, only because we really want to have time to respond to whatever the survey says and to actually make it meaningful and let people know that we utilize that information. So we need time to do that. After, so the survey would be out there for a specified period of time that we would set. Afterwards, the city will receive a report that looks like an insight that summarizes all the survey responses. This was just an example of one that we saw out, already being used. Grass Valley, which I don't know where that is. They provide a survey out there. You can put whatever intro you want to it to kind of talk about why we want to receive the information. We can ask them if they're residents or not, if that's important to us. If we just want to talk about Lewisville residents as well as visitors and anyone who may see it is free. Or we may just be interested in some of our resident information, depending on the question. And we can certainly narrow it down. depending on the question, and we can certainly narrow it down. In this survey example, they ask one question, that is a yes or no, or it's a pick or rank kind of question. So it's only not open-ended, it's kind of one or the other kind of a question. And then the second question would be open-ended. And we haven't had the ability to do that in the past because it takes so much time to analyze that data. For them, being able to do that for us is what makes this possible. So the first question we have is if you're interested, we kind of wanted to give you some possible survey topics. This is not at all comprehensive, but these are kind of ones that we as a staff met on and met with City Manager Barron and went over the possible topics. But we'd like to hear from you if there are any of these that you're just not interested in, or if there are some that aren't on this list that you would like us to add to the list. So the first one relates to street lighting, and I'm not going to read through all of these just to give you a general idea, but the street lighting is one where we hear on occasion that perhaps some of our older neighborhoods don't have the same amount of streetlights. So we would like to ask our residents, is it important to you that we go back and look at those and add streetlights where we think it's needed? And if so, how much would you be willing to spend annually? And that's kind of a budget-related question, so we want to get that information to see how important it is to them. Recycling is another one. We kind of wanted to talk a little bit about contamination and find out how important it is that we continue to offer curbside recycling, or even we could go to multifamily if we just want to talk about multifamily. And then we could get into an open-ended question about how would you suggest reducing contamination and reducing costs. Tree planting is another one where we were about to begin the process of updating our parks master plan. And one of the things we'd like to talk about is how important the tree canopy is. And if it's important to them, where do they think we should really concentrate our efforts? Park usage is one we're always interested in. We'd like to find out which parks they visit the most often and why. Why do they pick those? Is it because they want the open space? Or do they want the playgrounds? Or what are they going for and what are they interested in? Library services, this is more of an awareness-type question where we can send it out and say, did you know that all residents of Texas are eligible for a free library card at our library? And then also to ask them what services they would likely use at the library. Neighborhood revitalization, this one is again to let them know we have programs out there like Pep Program and our Love Your Block and various programs that Neighborhood Services provides. But we'd like to know what are some of the projects they would like to see in the neighborhood and make sure that we're covering those through opportunities that we're publicizing currently. A general one is community needs. It's basically just saying, what is the biggest need that you see in our community right now? And see what those responses are and see if we're addressing those. Gaps and barriers to services, that's again another general one that we just want to talk about. Do you know that we're providing services or do we not have a service that you are interested in? Or are we providing it and you just can't get to it? You don't know how, you don't know where it's available? We want to find out what those barriers are to any of the services that we're providing, or even if there are holes where we aren't providing a service. Neighborhood engagement, that's really one where we really want people to start engaging with each other and learning to know your neighbors and getting more involved in your community. So we'd like to talk about, would you like to be more engaged in your neighborhood? And if so, what do you think's holding you back? So what can we do to help get that started? A community garden, do we have one already in their neighborhoods? And if not, would they be interested in learning about how to get one started? And that's information we can provide directly to them. The same with compost or organics collection, just finding out more ways to limit what we're putting into the landfill and finding out if they currently compost at home, or if they're interested even in starting some sort of drop-off composting or organic waste collection program that we don't currently offer here at the city. So those were some of the topics that we have come up collectively as a staff. So if those were, we're asking for your feedback on those to see if you like any of those or all of those. And then we're also asking if you would like to do it bimonthly or if you would prefer to do it quarterly. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
If you could send a recycling quiz to my house every other week, since I'm always getting fussed at about being the recycling police, that would be great. I'm going to get in trouble for saying that, though.
It's on tape.
I'm excited about the community garden because I just received a call on that from the Timberbrook, Tracy French, that lives in the Timberbrook neighborhood regarding those lots at the end. And what would it take to turn that into a community garden? And I said, well, ask. This is, I like this. I like it a lot, and I like to see it more than a quarterly basis.
So the bimonthly is what you would like to see?
So I get a lot of questions, excuse me, about streetlights. So I definitely think, you know, that would be a very relevant topic. The park usage, I like this one a lot because I feel like we have a lot of parks that a lot of people don't know about. And so if we push something out about parks and showed graphics of the, all the different things that we have, then people could get excited about it. And I think that they, that would actually drive people to use them more. I don't know if maybe we would do one specific to Lake Park and just see what people might, what some of their thoughts are on Lake Park. But yeah, I agree that when you say bimonthly, that's twice a month, right?
That's...
Or is it every other month?
Every other month.
Every other month, okay. So yeah, I think quarterly is not enough. Is monthly an option? Because I, you know, I think every other month, that's probably not often enough, but I certainly don't want it so often that people just get annoyed and they don't participate.
My suggestion is maybe we start bimonthly and we measure the response and then how well we can utilize the data and manage the data and then look at increasing the frequency.
Would we, would we be doing a survey that's just on recycling, just on parks? Or is it going to be all of, all of the topics meshed together?
It would only be one topic at a time. We would only ask two questions. One would be a short one and one would be open-ended, and it would be regarding the same topic, so.
Okay. So then if we did it, if we started bimonthly, then I mean, that's going to take us a while to get through a lot of the stuff, so we'll have to do some arm wrestling on what gets to go first.
We can draw.
One of my suggestions is anything that's budget-related, you'd probably want to go first because we would have time to get one done before we finalize your budget process. So like something like street lighting that is a cost to the city, you might want to prioritize that first.
Okay.
I agree with street lighting as a, as a good topic because, as Councilmember Green said, that is a topic that comes up all the time with people in the neighborhoods. Also, the gaps and barriers to services. I think, looking at and reading through social media comments, there are a lot of, a lot of people that think we're not, we're not out there giving them information and, or they, they don't have the information. And I think we do, but it would be good to see if there are, if they have suggestions for how we could be doing it better.
Okay.
I'd like to see, I like all those. I like the monthly. Under the recycling, I also like to see what residents would like to recycle. What do they normally like, would like to put in there to keep it simple? The second thing I think was, may have been under the COVID, but maybe under this past February storm, just walking my neighborhood, I can't, there's so many trees that have been killed by that storm. I mean, there are, there are, I just walked my neighborhood and there are probably a dozen. I saw one resident the other day had three trees in the backyard, all dead. So I think that's going to be a major problem.
Any other comments before I swoop in with my last couple? The, the monthly cadence, if staff can keep up with the every other month cadence, that's great. What I'd hate to do is get out there where we're collecting lots of data but can't action on it in a reasonable timeframe. I think that sets an expectation that creates failure if we're not too careful on that. So, but if it's only the limited scope, like you're saying, I think that might help. I definitely hear about parks and playgrounds. One commentary that I got that was, I think, relevant to this is that every, just about every park we have has a basketball court and it's available for free play, but there's no other sports that really have that ability. And in fact, many of the sports, there's no space to play because it's taken up by leagues. So there's, there's definitely some questions about or concerns about how parks and leagues and individuals interact. Recycling and composting, definitely a piece there that I think we need to explore, whether community gardens and tree planting, I think those are all great ideas. I do have a bit of a concern about streetlights. I'd want to point out which neighborhoods those are because different folks have different ideas of what an older neighborhood is. And I think you're going to get a lot of feedback that says blast as much light into the sky as you possibly can. And that concerns me because, quite frankly, there's been a lot of studies that show that streetlights don't really do a whole lot as far as crime prevention goes. Neighborhoods that maybe light their own landscaping do some of that. But, streetlights and the cost and expense, but I'd want to make sure that we presented that in a, in a very specific and limited way so people didn't set an expectation that they were going to get it in their 1980s neighborhood.
Okay.
Other than that, it's a great tool. I think if they can compile that for us, that's, that's awesome, and I'm sure there will be other topics.
One quick, one quick comment on what you just said. When you're talking about like specific neighborhoods, would there be a way to put like a dropdown box for the, for the different area neighborhoods so you can kind of name, so at least that you can quantify who thinks they need lighting, so you can put it in a specific area? So I live in Silver Creek. That covers a few blocks, but if you can put a dropdown...
Like you would want them to pick which neighborhood they would be interested in?
Yeah, I mean, it may be easier to start with dropdown of the ones you know and put, maybe leave an other for somebody.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what the tool will allow for, right?
Yeah, I'm just asking if that's possible.
Yeah, that's a, it's a different way to skin it.
Yeah. I think we might can do something, but I'll definitely look into it and make sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Great tool. All right, we'll now move into regular session. With that, we have our invocation. If you would, please rise for Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Please join me in a moment of contemplation. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the American and Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Item E, public hearing. Continued public hearing, consideration of an ordinance pursuant to Section 311.003 of the Texas Tax Code, amending tax increment reinvestment zone number three, TERS 3, located south of State Highway 121 and Business 121 and being wholly located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Louisville, Texas by amending its boundaries and its benefits to the City of Louisville and amending the project and finance plan for the zone. This ordinance amends the boundaries of TERS 3 to include park and open-spaceland. The proposed boundaries include an additional approximate 53.05 acres generally located south of State Highway 121 and Business 121 and being wholly located within the ETJ of the city. This ordinance also amends the project and finance plan to update project costs and zone reimbursements, including the acquisition of park and open-spaceland and to include economic development authority. The recommendation is that the City Council continue this public hearing to the June 21st, 2021 meeting. I will entertain a motion.
Move to continue the public hearing to the June 21st, 2021 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If everyone would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Public hearing, number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Office District to Old Town Mixed Use 2 District on approximately 3.476 acres legally described as Lot 1, Block A, SCA and TBC Louisville Edition located at 400 West Main Street at request by Doug Oppenheimer, Denton County Holdings, the property owner. The applicant proposes to rent an outdoor event space at the rear of the property for private events. Since this type of use is not allowed in the Office District, Old Town Mixed Use District 2 zoning is requested to allow the proposed use by right. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous six to nothing approval on May 4th, 2020. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke is available for questions. If there are none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. If you would please vote. The public hearing is closed, five to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 3.46 acres legally described as Lot 1, Block A, SCA and TCB Louisville Edition located at 400 West Main Street from Office District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use 2 District zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
If you all would please vote. Passes five to nothing. Thank you. Now we will move to the Visitor Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. We have no cards for public comment. We will go ahead and move on to item G, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any speaker cards or comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If you would please vote. Consent Agenda is approved, five to nothing. We'll move to regular hearings. Item 12. Consideration of three variances related to a zoning designation of Town House 2, alleys and street right-of-way associated with preliminary plat of Castle Hills Windhaven Lots Edition containing 81 residential lots and nine common area lots on 11.28 acres out of the RF Harden survey abstract number 613 located at the southeast corner of Windhaven Parkway and Crider Road. The subject preliminary plat is located within the Castle Hill, within Castle Hills and the City of Louisville extraterritorial jurisdiction and is to be developed in accordance with the 1996 Bright Farms Agreement. The following variances are being requested. A, to allow a zoning designation of Town House 2 on blocks A, B, C, D, and E. B, to waive the alley requirement for lots less than 10,000 square feet in area. And C, to allow a 41-foot street right-of-way with six-foot sidewalk and utility easements in each side unloo of the required 50-foot right-of-way. Staff has no objections to these variance requests. It is the recommendation that the City Council approve the three requested variances as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke is available for questions, as is Brian Dench, the applicant. Counsel, do we have any questions? And if not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the three variances.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second, all right. I have a motion and a second. If you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 13. Consideration of three variances related to a zoning designation of Town House 2. Why am I having a challenge with Town House 2 tonight? Alleys and right-of-way associated with the preliminary plat of Discovery at the Realm South Edition containing 61 residential lots and three multifamily lots on 84.06 acres out of the B Schoonover survey abstract number 1209 and the A Singleton survey abstract number 1138 located at the southwest corner of Windhaven Parkway and Lady Tesla Avenue. The subject preliminary plat is located within the Castle Hills of the City of Louisville extraterritorial jurisdiction and is to be developed in accordance... extraterritorial jurisdiction and is to be developed in accordance with the 1996 Bright Farms Agreement. The following variances are being requested. A, to allow a zoning designation of Townhouse Two on blocks C, D, E, F, G and H. B, to waive the alley requirement for lots less than 10,000 square feet in area. And C, to allow a 41-foot street right of way with six-foot sidewalk and utility easements on each side in lieu of the required 50-foot right of way. Staff has no objections to these variance requests. It is the recommendation that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above. Available for questions are again Mr. Richard Lutke and Brian Dench. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. If you all would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 14. I don't see any Townhouse Two here, so I'm in good shape. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103, Access Management regarding driveway spacing on Lot 1R-1 and 2R, Block A of Austin Ranch West as requested by Ian Norfolk, Half Associates Incorporated, on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 21.577 acre lot zoned light industrial within the Austin Ranch West Edition located on, at the northeast corner of Tittle Drive and Travis Street. The property owner is proposing to build a 270,686 square foot office warehouse. Staff is currently reviewing the engineering site plan. The owner is requesting a variance to reduce the required driveway spacing of 100 feet within a deceleration storage lane. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
And a second.
Second.
All right. If everyone would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Mr. Solomon, we do not need you for this one. All right, item 15. Continued item. Consideration of an amendment to the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Reimbursement Agreement by and among the city of Lewisville, the Lewisville Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three, TERS Three, and Bright Realty LLC for project costs within Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Should the city council approve the ordinance amending the boundaries and the project and finance plan for TERS Three as described in the previous items, staff recommends an amendment to the reimbursement agreement to provide for updated project costs and zone reimbursements, including the acquisition of park and open space land and to outline economic development parameters. It is the recommendation that the city council continue this item to June 21st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Move to continue this item to the June 21st, 2021 meeting.
And a second.
Second.
All right. If everyone would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 16. Consideration of upcoming meeting dates for the city's budget process. A budget calendar has been provided which shows the upcoming dates for council meetings regarding the city's budget process. The calendar dates are set based on state requirements. One of the most important dates on the budget calendar is the date for the budget workshop. Historically, the workshop is held the first Saturday in August, which would be August 7th this year. This date could change later in the budget process based on when the city receives the final tax roll from the appraisal district. This roll is due on July 25th. However, it was received late last fiscal year. The information is crucial in making tax rate and budget decisions. It is the recommendation that the city council review the proposed calendar and direct city staff regarding any necessary changes and adopt the calendar. Any comments?
Move to approve the adoption of calendars set by the staff.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, or vote. I want to do the old, all those in favor thing, even though we've got the clicky thing for voting. So if y'all would please vote.
Councilwoman Kate, I just need you to vote on the computer, sorry.
All right, motion passes five to nothing. Item 17. Consideration of an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council providing for the abandonment, vacation and closure of a variable width section of right of way between Edwards Street and Houston Street. The original LM Keeley's addition contained right of way for Poitras Street, which was never constructed and has been fenced and used as private property for parking and storage for decades by the former adjacent properties. However, this section of the right of way was never formally abandoned by the city. This ordinance provides for the formal process to abandon a variable width portion of right of way between Edwards Street and Houston Street. The remaining portions of right of way being retained by the city include existing underground public and private utilities and overhead private utilities. A similar ordinance was passed in 2018 for a variable width portion of Walter Street on the east side of Leonard Street to allow the intrinsic development to have clear title to that land. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council providing for the abandonment, vacation and closure of a variable width portion of Poitras Street from Edwards Street to Houston Street as shown in Exhibit A, providing for the terms and conditions of the abandonment, vacation and closure, providing a repeal or severability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
If city council would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 18. Consider an act upon adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements for the construction, access and maintenance of the Prairie Creek East Trunk Interceptor generally located along Prairie Creek from Keeley Avenue westward to Valley Ridge Circle and to undertake all associated utility improvements. Authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing, savings and severability clauses and providing for an effective date. In order to construct, access and maintain the project, easements need to be acquired from multiple parcel owners. Staff will meet with the property owners to inform them of the pending improvements and provide a copy of the appraisal report. Property owners have previously been notified of the pending project via mailouts. As required by Texas Property Code, Section 21.0113, the city is required to first attempt to acquire the necessary acquisitions from the landowner voluntarily through the making of a bona fide offer prior to filing any eminent domain procedure. It's recommended that the city council consider and adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion which is prescribed by Texas Government Code, Section 2206053E. I'm not going to read all that because someone else is going to read all that in just a moment. Mr. David Solomon is available for questions.
I have a question. Where is he? There he is. There he is, okay. So I'm just looking at the map that was provided in the backup. The easements we're talking about, the entire property is highlighted. Is that with the entirety of the easement that we're talking about getting? Or is that just the identification of the parcel we're talking about?
No, those are the parcels. The easements are just a small portion of that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a very specific motion.
I move that the city of Lewisville, Texas adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number 18 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution. Said description and depiction being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, access and maintenance of College Street sidewalk improvements and other associated public utility improvements. This vote applies to all units of property described and depicted in Attachment One attached to the resolution.
I have that motion, and I have a second.
Counsel, I think we've got a correction to that motion.
Oh, do we have a correction?
It says College Street. I just got that. David, can you get the correct?
Yes, it's, um...
One more time, please.
It's for the Prairie Creek Trunk Sur Line as opposed to College Street.
Okay, I will amend my motion to do, you can say, to whatever it was, Prairie Street, Prairie Creek.
Trunk Sur Line.
Okay.
We got that? Councilmember Kate, will you?
Second.
Okay, thank you. If counsel would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 19. Discussion and consideration of appointment process to various city boards, commissions and committees. On June 30th, various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions and committees will be expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The board, commissions, committee appointment process electronic notebook has been created for city council's review. Data sheets for members requesting reappointment on all new applicants, applicants have been included in the electronic book. City council will need to identify, interview teams and determine which team will interview which board, commission or committee. And it's the recommendation that the city council proceed with the appointment process as described. So just so you know where this came from, the city secretary came through with the first pass on this, collected the boards where she felt that there was overlap, where people might have a similar interest in similar boards. And then we talked about the pairings of council with, wanted to make sure that we had a good mix of council members who had different interests there. So if, that's where this came from. If you have any questions about that or concerns, let me know. Otherwise, those first three paragraphs down there would be a great motion to make.
So with that preamble, Mr. Mayor, I move that we set the interview teams and assign board, commission, committee members as follows. Park Board, Library Board, TERS 1, 2 and 4 will be Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Brandon Jones, myself and Councilman William Meredith. The Arts Advisory Board, CDBG. Animal Services, 4B, will be Mayor TJ Gilmore and Councilwoman Ronnie Cade. Planning and zoning, Old Town Design Review Committee, ZBOA, Local Government Corp. Lewisville 2025 Advisory Committee will be teamed by Mayor Pro Tem Christian Green and Councilman Bob Troy.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All right, Councilmember Green has seconded. If counsel would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I do want to circle back. There are Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation, Oil and Gas Advisory Board, Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation. They're right now, unless we want to make appointments to those, I think many of them have some empty seats just because they're not being used. Is that right?
That's correct.
So if you have an interest, I would recommend circling back with our city secretary. She can help kind of direct that and we can fill those seats if need be. But I think right now, most of those are just on hold. Item 20. Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on June 21st, 2021. On February 17th, 2021, Mayor Rudy Durham, acting in accordance with authority granted to him under the city charter and code of ordinances and under Section 418.108A of the Texas Government Code, declared a local state of disaster for public health emergency due to the concerns related to COVID-19, the disaster declaration, which the Lewisville City Council subsequently ratified, supported and continued until 11:59 PM on June 7th, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond June 7th, 2021. It's the recommendation that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All right, if counsel would please vote. All right, motion passes five to nothing. All right, we now have reports about items of community interest, so I'm going to work my way across the table here. And Mr. Lutke? Mr. Solomon?
Nothing.
Hey, Park Fan?
So Mayor, Councilperson, Park Fans, we just wanted to give you an update on what the aquatic center status is. So thanks to the approval of increasing our starting salary for lifeguards and some of the efforts of our aquatic team and the community relations team, we've been able to hire enough lifeguards to open on a modified schedule starting on Saturday. So we'll be able to open Monday, Thursday, Friday, 12 to 7 PM. And then our typical weekend schedule, we'll only be able to open up the leisure and lazy river areas. So what we'll do is we'll only charge the twilight entry fee till there. But we have enough potential new lifeguards in the hopper to maybe be able to open full time a little bit later in the summer. We'll assess that every Monday and we'll either give you a phone call or make a report at this meeting. Another thing I'd like to have you save a date is for August 28th, which will be a Thrive celebration, which will be a hybrid. We survived COVID. We opened a major building, an anniversary of this great building. So we'll get some more information out to you about that event soon.
Awesome, thank you.
Mayor, just a quick update on the lake level. It's 527.91.
That is so exciting.
It's back.
It's back, the lake level report. Mr. Ferris?
No, sir.
All right, counsel, I warned you I was going to be doing this. So Councilmember Jones?
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to start another one. So just to back up, Stacy, if you want a great job, go out to and apply. We have a job fair on June 8th, noon to four. Go out there and get a job. We need those lifeguards out there. Anybody wants to live the Baywatch life, get on out there. And also, I'm looking for the second one. It's also park related. If I can just find it. I'm blind today.
Keep vamping.
Summer dance classes and karate classes. Now, can't get her to get my breakdancing classes in there. But for all you park fans, we have adult ballet classes that started tonight, adaptive karate classes and youth teen classes. Check out the Thrive website and go check it out. That's it for me.
Councilmember Kate?
No report.
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Troy?
I just want to say that the first sans of Lewisville was a resounding success. And thank you to all the staff involved in pulling it off. I heard a lot of good comments from many different people. So great, great work. And let's keep it up. I wish I could be here tomorrow night, but I won't be, I won't be near, so.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
City Attorney? Sure? There's chance. City Secretary? All right, City Manager?
I do not.
All right. Just a couple of quick points. Who did I skip?
Me.
Oh, I did, I did. I totally messed up my own system. There it is.
That's why you caught him off guard, because you skipped me.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Well, you know, now that my thunder has been completely stolen, I was going to say that I'm very happy about the summer concert series coming back. Seems like they've been very well presented. There was also the, what was it called? The Best Little Brew Fest that happened last weekend. That was also very well attended. So I'm really, really excited to see activity in the park again. It's really exciting. I did want to say, one of the things, Thrive has also got a whole lot of sports camps going on this summer, too. So there's a, there's a big list of them. So I've signed my sign up for several of them and it looks like there's still quite a bit of open spots on those summer camps. So definitely go check those out if you're looking for something for the kiddos to do. Also, it looks like there's a really fun event coming up at the Grand Theater. The Grand brings dad jokes to the stage for a fun night of puns and laughter. That will be Father's Day weekend, June 19th at 7 PM. Tickets start at $15. Sounds like they've got a really great lineup of comedians for that show. I'm not quite sure it would be kid friendly, but it might be something that would be a great date night for dads. That is all.
Outstanding. My apologies. So for next council meeting, it'll be Councilmember Cade will be first and we'll just keep working around. It'll make sense after a couple of months of this.
Okay.
With that, I do want to let folks know that the Chamber of Commerce has got a breakfast meeting this week. So if you have an opportunity, go on by and participate with the chamber. I happen to be the guest speaker. So if you want to find out more about what's going on, I will be there. And I also will be serving my second Tuesday of office hours on the third floor. So if you, as a resident, have an interest in coming and chatting with the mayor, it's part of my goal to be as available as I possibly can. So Tuesday's upstairs and then we'll have our compact council and then we will be going out to the concert. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by voting yea. With that, we are adjourned.